Let us pray. Holy God, Creator of the world, you give us life and love in the reflection of your people you set before us. As we begin our city council meeting, we pray for your spirit to enlighten each of us. Bless our Quincy community. We pray for peace in the world. We pray for our military and for all those who keep us safe. We pray for our loved ones who are in the hospital and in nursing homes and for those who care for them. Amen.
Okay, we'll have the pledge allegiance. Alderwoman Mann, if you can lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With no other business before the beating, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Here.
Mann.
Here.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Here.
Brook, Hobrook.
Here.
Sorry. Havermell.
Here.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Lopper.
Here.
Mussolini.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Oslog.
Here.
Fourteen ayes.
Ms. Chairman. Yes, Alderman? I move the minutes of the previous beating be approved as granted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Our first petition is blessing health system requesting permission to conduct a raffle and have the bond requirement waived from now through September the 7th, 2015. The clerk recommends approval of the permit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
By Cadence Carnival requesting, excuse me, permission to allow the St. Louis Children's Hospital helicopter land at the Knights of Columbus on Sunday, excuse me, October 19th between 12:00 PM and 1:00 PM and leaving when the carnival is over at 5:00 PM helicopter would allow the kids to crawl in and check it out.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move that the prayer petition be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
First resolution is interim purchasing director, fire chief recommending approval of the contract with Clark Power Services in the amount of $17,828.81 for engine number four in-frame engine rebuild.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Hobrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lopper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
The resolution is adopted.
Next resolution is police chief, police automatic committee and interim purchasing director recommending the police department be granted authority to purchase mobile device training from TIL Technologies, Norwalk, Cincinnati and Connecticut in the amount of $3,950 utilizing crime lab funds.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I would move to adopt the resolution.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Hobrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lopper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered.
Next resolution is director of utilities and engineering and the interim purchasing director recommending approval of the purchase of a 2014 Ford I-50 or 150 pickup truck from Wright Automotive Incorporated of Hillsboro, Illinois in the amount of $15,740 under the Illinois Division of Central Management Service contract.
Your Honor.
Alderman Brink.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Hobrook.
Aye.
Havermell.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sasson.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lopper.
No.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
No.
Oslog.
Aye.
And the mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I wasn't quick enough, but a simple explanation of what we're doing here, I believe we're, uh, Anita maybe can.
Yeah.
Can give clues in on what we're doing, what actually is happening here.
What it is, is the simple accounting here. When we were audited, they would like us to recognize that we had donations to put into our, to show that we got a donation and then we'll show it as expense, but we did not pay for anything. It was all donations.
Okay.
But we have to show it in our books.
I mean, this is not something new. We've done this, but we've never recorded this in our budget.
Correct.
That we've received this income and we've spent this income for, for a given purpose.
Correct. The money was donated by Titan and there was one other place.
Okay, and I, and I think we did the same thing with the airport recently with, with the passenger facility charge.
Correct.
We've moved it in and made it official.
Yes.
It's just an accounting measure.
It's just an accounting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
And I think we did discuss it in finance too, so it's, it's been vetted.
So we have 12 yeas and a mirror voting yea, which makes it 13 and two noes.
Okay, the ordinance is adopted.
I have an ordinance up for our first presentation back on the agenda and its privacization.
Ms. Chairman.
Uh, would you have a request to speak?
Oh, yes, we do.
Move the rules to be suspended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We'll now hear from our speaker that's on the agenda, Mr. Chris Powers. And Mr. Powers, I know you've done this before, but if you'd like to state your name and address for the record and I'll remind you of five minutes.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Chris Powers. I live at 527 Broadway. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Well, I'm gonna talk trash, okay? And first of all, I wanna congratulate Alderman Havermell. I appreciate that you're into recycling, at least your own proposals. So, that's nice. On the way here, about an hour ago, I stopped by McDonald's, and this is not a story about McDonald's and all the trash they generate. It's not. It's just that I was walking in the door and out the door was coming a little boy followed by his mother. And he turned at one point, just as she was about to come out the door, and started to go back in. So I waited a moment longer. She came out and said, "Sorry, he doesn't know which way to go." And I looked at the little boy and I said, "It's okay, ma'am. One day he'll make a good city councilman." So we're back here tonight talking about this. And two of the three proposals on the table have already been put forward. There's another one from Alderman Farha that I think makes the most sense. But I don't wanna just talk about trash. I'll say this, that anytime you have carts out on the street, totes, and I think that's a cute name for them, a little too cute, they're garbage carts. They're not fashion accessories. So, that undermines recycling because everything goes into those carts. And for that, we're buying new equipment, about almost 30,000 to stick on these trucks so that they have tote lifts, tote tippers, so we can all use totes. But we're not all using totes. 709 of the 15,000 or so households in this city have signed up for totes, and we're bending over backwards to accommodate them. I don't think that's very smart. I don't think that really pays attention to the wishes of this city or its people. If you read the headlines, watch TV, world's in a hurtful spot right now. In Iraq, you've got Sunnis, Shiites, Kurds, all fighting against each other. In Ukraine, you've got secessionists, separatists. Even California, in our own country, wants to put up for a vote to turn that state into six separate states. We can do that all day long. We can get it down to the granular level and say it's all about us, not just a country or a state, but my neighborhood or my ward, my city. We all go this way, that way, do it all for ourselves. But you know, this garbage system that we have wasn't meant to please everybody. It was meant for all of us. And we like it the way it is. So if you need to divide the city over these kind of seeming to me sort of petty things that keep getting regurgitated, just remember to turn out the lights when you leave. That's all I've got to say. I'll take questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Appreciate it. I entertain a motion to resume sitting in the city council. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Ms. Chairman.
I got a couple of statements and clarifications. First off, we will be making, or I'll be making some motions on the, on the ordinances that are following. I'm asking for the council's indulgence here to let me say a few words. You know, one of the questions I've been asked a number of times this weekend, and I've had the full range of calls from, that I'm the devil to a hero, so I appreciate the calls, I appreciate every call I've ever gotten, so it certainly was kinda surprising some of the comments though, but anyway, positive and negative. But like I said, the main question was why did I bring this back up? Well, I reintroduced the private options because when we started getting the information out of the committee, I think what we had voted on in February has been changed significantly in my view. We were originally supposed to do a route survey, and I know that's on tap to do afterwards, but I was on the understanding that we were gonna do it beforehand. I don't understand how we can decide how much equipment we need without knowing what routes we're gonna be using. That makes no sense to me. We were originally to have an arm type truck to move into a tote system that would allow us to go to one-man operation, it wouldn't have to get out of the truck, that would allow us to save money on government's version of workman's comp, which is MICA. That doesn't happen. We still have to get somebody out of the truck, move the tote, and have some physical interaction with our crews. We found out that manning is gonna be a little bit more than what we anticipated. We're, you know, I was also understanding that the truck purchase would be somewhat phased in over time. Was that not, okay, that's not really happening now. So, I, my opinion is, is I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Powers just said, other than, I agree with part of it. I think we either keep the system as it is, or we move to real automation, or we privatize. I think a hybrid system is counterproductive. Other areas that weighed on my decision to bring this back up, again, I felt the council needed to weigh all options with the significant changes we've been faced with. If we use the financial projections that the administration's provided, by the year 2020, I think we subsidized the garb, not subsidized, that's probably a bad word, but right now, the garbage and recycling program is $800,000 out of our general fund every year roughly. Is that correct, Lynda?
Correct.
Right now? Okay. By the year 2020 and one projection with what we're proposing tonight, that'll be $1.9 million a year. I have no idea how we're gonna pay that. None. There's only three or four ways to pay that. We either change how we deliver services, whether it be garbage, whatever department we decide to hit. I know there's certain departments can't be hit any harder. It can come from a direct tax, whether we raise property or sales tax. I don't think there's any stomach on the council or in the community for that. Again, we privatize, or we, again, or we hope that we will have an organic growth in our tax revenue, and our historic trends tell us it won't be fast enough to offset the costs that we're seeing. So we're, we're in a bit of a mess. I don't know, you know, maybe we need to, the other area that's being neglected, in my opinion, over the years, and we're all at fault, I'm as much at fault as anybody, is that we're letting our largest asset, which is infrastructure, not be addressed as well as it should be, in my opinion. Now, this administration's talking about doing more. I think they will, but we do have years of, in my opinion, underfunding of our infrastructure repairs to make up for. How do we do all this? Again, changing the way we do things, I think full privatization is one option. I think the mayor's option of a contracted privatization was a positive step as well. Either or, in my opinion, would've helped with the financial challenges we face. There is no, I wanna make this very clear, it's 'cause I know we have some city employees in the, in the audience, and I, there is no problem with our garbage service today. None. Our people do an outstanding job. They do it in all sorts of weather. They work very hard. What we have is a priority of services problem and a financial problem to deal with. And garbage, in my opinion, a private, there is a private option for garbage where it'd be much more difficult for something like police or fire to privatize or some other department. Now, some people might say, "Well, you gotta get a containment on other departments," and that's true. We do. We've lacked discipline on that front. We need to do that. Again, you know, the last thing I wanna say is, you know, we've kinda danced around the issue. No matter what we do, if we privatize, if we raise sticker prices, if we reduce services, if we change services, whatever we do, it's a tax increase. To sit up here and tell you that, call it whatever we want, anything we do that changes this is a tax increase, and we need to be honest with people. And that's just the way it is. I mean, I don't like it. We gotta do some cost containment on top of that, but that's where we're at. You know, there's been some Alderman approach me that since all this stuff's changed significantly, should we be tabling everything and starting over? I, I don't know that. The League of Women Voters made a good case to do that, but I feel that the city, the other side of it is, I think the community's suffered enough and tired of hearing about it. It's probably time that we move forward. So that's all I've got to say.
Your Honor.
Yeah, yes, Alderwoman.
I, I do agree with some of the things that Paul did say, where we do have some issues with the first proposal that I kinda brought forward and worked with Glenda on. There were more efficiencies. We did have the route study where we were gonna do that before we bought the trucks and phased it in, so I do agree with him wholeheartedly on that. In our packets, we did receive an email with kind of a timeline and kind of an agenda for the future. To me, it really didn't make sense, the order that we have that timeline flowing in, certain things I think should be looked at up front instead of pushed down three, four years, five years down the road. What I would like to see, and what my suggestion is to the council, is that we do what we should've done six months ago when we sent this to the Garbage and Recycling Commission, was have them put together a comprehensive plan. At that time, the Garbage and Recycling Commission was told that we were only supposed to look at the purchase of garbage trucks and recycling trucks, and that was our only job. If we had looked and set up a comprehensive plan with a timeline, with statistics for everything, with things that we could take to the community, I think they would understand it better. Right now, with Paul's proposal, first of the, for the first proposal, if we go to that where we make everybody have their own garbage pickup and they have to find their own garbage pickup, what are they gonna do for recycling? The city's not gonna be out there picking up their recycling. Are they gonna take it to Quincy Recycle? Is Quincy Recycle going to take it? Are other vendors going to even pick up recycling? I mean, we have proposals on the table that haven't even been looked at. The community doesn't even know what this would do to them if we went with that proposal. We have also, we also could have massive dumping. In some of the wards, some of the Aldermen are concerned with massive dumping. Is it gonna be thrown in creeks? Is it gonna be thrown in front of houses? If you go to that, are we gonna have to have a, somebody hired to go out and just survey this and all they do is write tickets to correct the dumping? There's issues on the table that haven't been thought of, haven't been addressed. We all need to sit and look at the big picture of this and say, "What do we want this to do in 10, 15 years? How are we gonna get to that point?" Right now, all we're doing is arguing here at the council about which way we think is best and which way we think we need to go. We need all of our heads to work together to come up with one solution, and the mayor to be on board too, to come up with a solution and work with us. So I propose we table all of these resolutions and the garbage trucks for at least one month so we can send it to committee to come up with a plan. If we can't come up with a plan in a month, then we might need to table it just a little bit longer, but I think we really need to go forward with something that has a set plan of what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it.
Alderwoman, first I'd say that these three ordinances that are on, due to the Alderman's request, were on the agenda when we proposed garbage and recycling before. Alderman Farha's, I believe, was only on there one week to give him credit, but I do know that both privatization plans to make sure that everything was lined up was on the agenda, and I, I might be remiss, but I think that was in March. Was that, was that not right? Or when did we vote on that? Somewhere around there.
February.
February, so February or March. So, we had three weeks within, actually four weeks if you count, when the proposals were made by Alderman Havermell at the time, and then three weeks following for questions to be answered and for citizens to participate, and I believe those options were voted down because citizens did not find that it matched what they viewed in the garbage and recycling program. This administration presented two options. One was the private, the privatization was charged, and again, that got voted down. We had various forums on that where we had over 400 participants. And then we had the, the plan that the city council adopted with, I believe it was 11 votes, so it was by a large majority, and, and then this administration and the Garbage and Recycling Committee was carried, was tasked with trying to carry that out under the hybrid system. Now, I believe in the ordinance is, that were passed, they didn't make mention of complete automated trucks being purchased. They didn't make mention of route studies when they would be done. It was a concept. And like with anything, when you begin, begin studying what's actually practical, when members of the committee went to go look at those trucks, it wasn't practical necessarily in some instances to go down to one driver due to the hybrid nature of, of the plan that was adopted by the council. The efficiencies that you can find are going to be if you have a completely automated system, completely automated. That's how you have efficiencies where drivers do not have to get out of the vehicle, but by having a hybrid system, you're always gonna have to have drivers that get in and get out of vehicles. But at least with the hybrid system that was adopted by the city council, it's a step forward. It's a smaller step forward than what I would've liked, probably a smaller step forward than what you would've liked, but I will also say that this is a decision that's been pending for over 14 years. These trucks have, were purchased in 2001. The loan was paid off in 2006. Now this council is being burdened with making a very tough decision because we weren't looking ahead, and so I am not in favor of tabling. I think continuing to pass this on is further indecision in the community, further questions. We're spending over $13,000 a month in maintenance to our vehicles. This is a phased-in vehicle approach. It's five of nine vehicles with $100,000 set aside each year, so then that way, every three years, the committee can look at when they have the money to buy a new vehicle, do we need to buy a new vehicle? And certainly, as I said when we presented things, if, if the council was wanting everything, every decision to be made to be made easy, that was privatization. Privatization solved our, our monetary issues that we have, and we all know from the budget retreats, our revenues and expenses projection, we know what our pension, that our pension payment, our costs are gonna rise, and it would've solved that. We wouldn't have had to be worried about efficiencies. The, the city of Quincy is never gonna be an expert in the garbage and recycling business like private companies who are here in town. They do it for a living. They have millions of customers. And so if you wanted the most efficient operation, that would've happened under privatization, but it didn't. And so cities are always going to have questions on how we run it. The best way to find efficiencies is to adopt a program, look at it for a year or two, see what's going on, see how your crews are reacting to the equipment, see if more people sign up, and then go back and look at it and say, "Okay, what do we need to change?" But continuing to propose and propose and propose, we're just talking about projections, and we're never gonna have any concrete numbers that we can take back, take back to the city council, take back to our constituents and say, "Either this is working better than what we had hoped, or it's not working and we need to make a change."
Two things, Your Honor. First of all, I think you're missing my first point. I was talking about tabling the purchase of garbage trucks. The committee right now, and the council right now, does not understand the timeline. We need to still come up with, even if we just tabled the garbage truck purchase for a few weeks, we need to come up with a plan of how we're gonna move forward on that, because what we've discussed and what's in this particular letter that you wrote to us with the plan, the years are off, they're skewed, it, it just doesn't make sense. We need a better timeline. So that's one thing I think that really needs to be looked at before we even purchase these trucks, of how we need to move forward and what timeline we want to see so that we're all on the same page. Because how can we make good decisions if we're not on the same page and if the timeline is crazy? Second thing is, are you wanting us to just propose, to just decline the first two ordinances as we did the first year and then table, you know, then table the garbage truck purposes? That's what you're saying you're recommending to the council?
No. First, I was disagreeing with, with your point that the citizens had not been able to weigh in on the question, on the ordinances that were proposed because of the fact that the ordinances that were proposed had three readings the first time. It would be my preference, as I originally.
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes, Alderman.
It's my understanding that the mayor is not a part of the discussion around the table. He's just to facilitate the discussion.
Okay.
Counsel?
Okay. She, sorry, Alderwoman asked me a question.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I welcome the second bite at the apple. I wish Alderman Farha would've pushed through his ordinance to start with. I wasn't necessarily in full favor of it at the time, but it has become clear that it is the best choice. We have a system that is efficient, it's effective, simple, and it's well-received by the population of the city. And why we would want to upheave, threaten our system of recycle for something that we don't know, that we don't know how to do? We know how to pick up garbage.
to just decline the first two ordinances as we did the first year, and then table, you know, then table the garbage trucks purposes? Is that's what you're saying you're recommending to the council?
No. First, I was disagreeing with, with your point that the citizens had not been able to weigh in on the question, on the ordinances that were proposed, because of the fact that the ordinances that were proposed had three readings the first time. It would be my preference, as I originally-
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order?
Yes, Alderman.
It's my understanding that the mayor is not a part of the discussion around the table. He's just to facilitate the discussion.
Okay.
Counsel?
Okay. She, sorry, Alderman asked me a question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman.
I welcome the second bite at the apple. I wish Alderman Farha would have pushed through his ordinance to start with. I wasn't necessarily in full favor of it at the time, but it has become clear that it is the best choice. We have a system that is efficient, it's effective, simple, and it's well-received by the population of the city. And why we would want to upheave, threaten our system of recycle for something that we don't know, that we don't know how to do? We know how to pick up garbage. We've been doing it for years and years and years. You can have your turn after me.
We probably need a motion a second on, on the, on, do we, we have one motion?
My motion was to table everything. That was the first motion.
Wait, did we have a, do we need to do it line by line?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer a little bit of Mr. Deuster House's. The proposal that's out there now, Alderman, is basically no change to the service. All we're looking to do is to add the tote program, and, and there'll be, and we're going to look at the routes, we're going to do a lot of work down the road. All, all, the difference between the program that's on the, on the agenda right now, and Alderman Farha is, is adding the tote system. And, and that's really, that's all the difference is, is what's on the table, is adding tote system. And it doesn't make sense to me, if we have a chance to put the totes in with the new trucks, as we drive down, the, the people have a choice to either put a sticker on a bag for the, for the person that has one bag, or have, give them the option of doing a tote, where they, it's the same truck, for, for $10,000 per truck, we can have a go-to tote system, and hopefully that will help our workman's comp case by doing the toter, so the guys won't have to throw that many bags at that station. And, so I, I don't see where we're, this, what's on the, the agenda changes the system. As you said, I think we've got a good system also. All we're looking to do is to upgrade a little bit going down the road.
And for a point of clarification, the, there's, there's three ordinances that are on the agenda. The first one is privatization, where the city basically lets people take, yeah, go ahead.
The first one is a privatization where people would contract directly with a provider of their choice. We would license the provider like we do any other business, whether it be electrician, plumber, whatever. The second ordinance that I proposed would be basically the mayor's proposal, first privatization proposal, where it's contracted, contracted privatiz, I call it contracted privatization, where we're, we're basically still in charge of making sure your garbage is picked up. We're just letting somebody else physically pick up that garbage. So, and again, those end up being a tax increase, to be honest.
But to facilitate, to facilitate, Alderman Farha's amendment would be a license with 75 cent stickers, no tote as an option. But if all these go to, voted down, we still have our system that you had passed, 11, it does not mention totes. It, it, if all these, the ordinances are voted down, we have a system in place. The system in place is 75 cent stickers with, with an option for, for our citizens to sign up for totes twice a year, and for those citizens to pay for totes. So once again, if these get voted down, we have a system in place, and that's the system that this council voted on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to reserve further comment until we actually have a motion before-
We have one motion to, we have a motion to table-
Can I make one comment? Because if you get a second, we can't discuss it. I am the guilty party. I did withdraw. First of all, we didn't vote on my motion or ordinance originally. I withdrew it. There was some discussion in the last 15 minutes, and the mayor graciously asked me, with Alderman Lepers' concurrence, if they could at least pass this to the committee and consider automation. Now, my personal opinion is they did, and obviously, this is sort of a jerry-rig system for the 700 people. That doesn't bother me. It really doesn't. I mean, we waste, government is famous for wasting money. We find new and creative ways. Whether it works or not, I don't know. But I do agree with Alderman Sasson. It's really at the margin that this different exists. Now, there is one critical difference to both Alderman Havermail's and mine. The city of Quincy is the exclusive waste hauler for residential waste. Both Alderman Havermail and I, in our ordinance, tried to at least begin to address the fact that commercial waste haulers should pay some kind of fee. We discussed franchise fees and licensing fee. Both of ours proposed a $500 per-vehicle license fee. Now, I think that's one of the things that would have been nice, and I don't know if they were charged with it or not, that the committee did. But I recognize too, that the committee spent a lot of time working hard, and they need to be credited, and we need to take that seriously. I don't have huge opposition to tabling this for a great deal of, of time, but I also don't necessarily disagree with the administration's point of view, that we have discussed and discussed and discussed that. I meant no disrespect to the public by bringing this up, but I thought we needed to get clarity, and for the sake of clarity, this needed to be presented. I agree with Alderman Havermail in one respect, there is, and Alderman Deuster House. There is no problem with our garbage service. We know what we're doing. It works. So, I mean, some of my concern was the media, and a great deal of discussion had gone on to the media. This was beginning a privatization. This was beginning a fundamental change. I think that is a discredit, because that was never discussed in terms of this being the beginning of something. So that's what I have to say, and with all due respect, you can get a second.
Okay, so we'll, we'll need a motion on the individual ordinance. So you'd have to one by one to table. So the first one, Madam Clerk, if I'm not mistaken, is the ordinance for privatization. So we, do we have a motion on this particular ordinance?
Motion, please.
We have a motion, and we have a second to table this for-
Did Ryan second it?
Alderman Ryan's.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to table this for one month. All those in favor?
No.
Opposed?
No.
By the opinion of the chair, the noes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman?
I move the ordinance be read first time by title.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk, call the roll, please.
By title, okay. Alderman Gill, and this is to read by title.
That's correct.
This is just to read by title.
Just to read it and consider it.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
You're just reading my title, right?
Yes. Aye. Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
No.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermail?
Aye.
Farha?
No.
Sasson?
No.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolini?
No.
Brink?
No.
Heinecke?
No.
Hostlog?
No.
Five ayes, nine noes.
Okay, the motion fails.
Okay, the next ordinance up for presentation is ordinance that does with tote system for garbage recycling through the system.
Mr. Chairman, apparently, there's no support for that, obviously. It's a futile effort. What do we need to do to dispense with this?
Table.
I don't want table, but no.
Table, I'm definitely.
I make a motion, we read the first time by title.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opinion of the chair, the motion's, is to read the privatization ordinance first time by title only. So I'll redo it. All those in favor to read first time by title? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, one aye. All those against signify by saying no.
No.
By the opinion of the chair, the noes have it.
And the third ordinance is the sticker fee and the commercial collector license by city.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman?
I move that that be read a first time by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? By opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance amended in article three, garbage and recycling, chapter 211, health regulations of the municipal code of city of Quincy of 1980. Here ends the first reading by title only.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman?
For the sake of clarity, and not to rush anybody, it seems to me that you need me to waive section 2207. And I want to say something before I do that, because you can't really go to the next resolution without that, the next series of resolutions. And again, there's little fundament, well, the reason is they're going to vote next on buying trucks, and if we pass mine, or don't pass mine, then you've got mine hanging over, and you make a decision, and that may have some adjustments. So we need to get rid of this right now, one way or another.
Alderman, the, the recommendation from the garbage, Alderman Ryan, the recommendation from the garbage and recycle committee is the, the garbage trucks with the tote tippers on them. If Alderman Farha's motion would pass, I believe most likely the garbage and recycling recommend, committee would then recommend, depending on what the council, to buy the trucks without the tippers.
Well, this gets rid of totes.
Yeah, this, this removes the totes as an option for the city.
It's moot on the matter of the totes, correct, Lonnie?
Yeah.
The way it's written, it doesn't address totes. So theoretically, yeah. It's just, it's just maintaining the system of stickers. It's, it discusses that. It doesn't discuss-
Alderman, with all due respect, then what's the point? What are we doing here?
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm answering your question.
If you're not going to make a substantive change in the plan, why are we even talking about it again? That's my, you asked me to put this on the count, to, to make a substantive change.
Right.
You asked me to put this on there when I put my, these ordinances back on there, and now you're saying it doesn't change anything. What was the point?
No, there is a difference.
With all due respect.
I'm saying, don't send this to the, the public, that we're, we're changing the spirit of the program. We're going to, we're going to start the program. We're going to try to go to automation. We're going to try to eventually go to privatization. That's not what the will of the council was. The second thing, there is a fundamental difference. Yours and mine-
I'm not talking about between mine and yours. I'm talking about between what's already on the table and what you've, if you're saying there's no difference, why go through-
There's little difference.
There's elimination of the totes.
There's elimination of the totes.
No, there's not.
It does?
No, there's not.
Yours only has a license fee and the sticker.
Right. That's right.
It doesn't address totes whatsoever.
So I'm fine with that. I don't really think we need to have the totes for 700 people. But the reality is, I'm not telling the administration in my ordinance how to micromanage their system. I just want to be clear. Okay. So we have a motion, or Alderman?
I, I think the question is, though, we, I want everybody to understand, though, so if we vote for Alderman's amendment here, then the tote program is, is out.
That's correct.
So then, so the next two resolutions-
Are, are the, the, the resolution for the garbage truck, the two additional garbage trucks are, we did buy one garbage truck with tote tippers already.
I don't know how you got down for record, but I'll be a no on that, Jenny. So I don't know how you got it written down there on his first, first time by title.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Okay, wait a minute.
For the 2.207.
Okay, I need, I need some clarification here, because I'm getting two different things. Corporation Council is telling us that this has no, does not address totes whatsoever. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So adopting this ordinance has no, adopting this ordinance has no bearing on the tote system.
Yes, it does. It does. It has a bearing on, the, the resolution or the ordinance does not address the totes. But how it does affect it is that, since it doesn't address the totes, you would not have a tote system. It doesn't? Because that the ordinance doesn't allow for it. It doesn't provide for it.
Your Honor, what, what they're trying to do is keep everything like we've done it the past 20 years and not make any changes.
Oh, no, I get, I get that. And that's what I thought you were saying.
They're not looking at, you know, it's, it's like the day and age when computer technology came out, if a business did not improve, and improve their computers and move to the future generation, they're going to be out of business. If we don't continue with the totes and try to move toward more efficiencies, we're going to be putting our own garbage and recycling program out of business. So if we continue the way we've been doing it for 20 years, we're going to keep getting ourselves more and more and more and under a hole. If we can move ourself and figure out a good timeline, and come up with a comprehensive plan of how we can be more efficient, that we've been hoping would come about of this, and we can sit down in a meeting and put this all together, then maybe we can move to the future where we can benefit this program.
We, so we have a motion, a second. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, we have a call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Once there's a call for a vote, there can't be a question.
Clarify with the vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and a call for a vote on dispensing with 2207 to adopt the ordinance, and this ordinance, so everybody's clear, removes the tote option from the city code, and establishes a $500 license fee per vehicle. So this removes the tote, and then puts in a, a licensee fee. So we do have a call to vote. Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Gill.
Aye.
Mann. Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
No.
Havermail?
Aye, aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
No.
Ryan?
No.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolini?
No.
Brink?
No.
Heinecke?
No.
Hostlog?
No.
Five ayes, nine noes.
The motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more comment. Alderman Farha, I apologize to you. Your ordinance did exactly what I thought it was. I misunderstood the instructions from Corporation Council. I apologized to you publicly for-
You owe me no apology.
And I appreciate the fact that you're willing to present options to this council. Thank you.
Have a resolution out. It's the Central Service Director, Garbage and Recycle Committee, and Interim Purchasing Director recommend approval to purchase two garbage trucks from Downing Sales in service for $306,200.
Mr. Chairman?
Your Honor, I table this for one month, and send to the committee the recommendation that we come up with a better comprehensive plan to put together to bring forth to the committee before we present this matter.
I move to adopt.
We don't have a table. Do we have a, do we have a second on?
Second.
We have a motion and a, and a second to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My opinion of the chair, the noes have it. Alderman Sasson?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Alderman Deuster House? I don't dispute that we need equipment. We've needed it for several years. There's been resistance on the council to purchasing equipment in the past. However, we're on the wrong path to achieve illusory efficiencies in a system we don't know how to implement, we don't understand, and in the process, destroy a very workable system that we have. So with that being said, I don't support purchasing trucks that move us further along that path.
Alderman Deuster House, we're not changing the other thing, other than we're, we're offering a tote system.
You're buying unnecessary equipment.
And we haven't spent money on equipment like this before?
And I recall in the past, a certain alderman saying, I can't get this by my people. We can't buy equipment.
Okay, are there any-
I hope you're looking at somebody besides myself.
Any additional questions?
I do have a comment. I do want to make a comment. Alderman Deuster House, I understand your concern. With all due respect to Alderman Lepner, I don't think the problems, I, I think the comparison to the computer systems, and it, it, it just doesn't fit. But that being said, I mean, when you look at garbage, the way garbage and sewage is collected, it's been the same for 4,000 years. There's nothing, nothing new. All that being said, I think it's unfair to send back to the committee discussion of something that's already settled at this level, from a policy standpoint. Obviously, the administration and the aldermen have settled this, so, I mean, I don't see why we want to, want to hold this up, but that's just-
Okay.
-my opinion.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, so the, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and purchase two additional garbage trucks, which would be in addition to the garbage truck that this council already agreed to purchase before. Clerk, please call the roll.
Who seconded Sasson's motion?
Alderman.
Okay, Brink, okay, thank you.
No, I think actually you've got a table.
No, that got defeated.
That was dispensed.
That was dispensed.
Okay. Alderman Gill?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
No.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermail?
No.
Farha?
Reluctant aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Lepper?
No.
Mussolini?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Ten ayes, four noes.
The resolution is adopted.
Our last resolution is Central Service Director, Garbage and Recycle Committee, and Interim Purchasing Director recommend approval to purchase two recycled trucks from Key Equipment for $514,218.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Sasson?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill?
Aye.[1729.03] Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermael?
Aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman?
I'd like, I'm sorry, please change my vote to no.
To no, okay.
Alderman Lepers?
No.
Alderman Lepers?
No.
Okay. Mussolini?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
No.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Eleven ayes. Let's see, wait a minute, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Ten ayes and four noes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Other report of the finance. Transfers to be $241,293. Expenditures to be $512,320.97. And payroll to be $663,335.53. Farha, Sasson, Deuster House, Havermael, Committee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Farha?
I move the report be received and vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Mann?
Aye.
Deuster House?
Aye.
Bauer?
Aye.
Holbrook?
Aye.
Havermael?
Aye.
Farha?
Aye.
Sasson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lepper?
Aye.
Mussolini?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Heinecke?
Aye.
Hostlog?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes.
So ordered. Madam Clerk, any additional business?
Only thing I have is I would like to thank everyone for United Way Cookout, my committee, Amanda Keck, April Scott, Julie Beebe, Kathy Slushler, Marissa B. from the township, Nancy Dolan, Patty Maples, Rosie Knight, Sharon Tedrow, Tina Berry, and Vicky Ebbing, also Glenda Hackamac, Tess Bratton, and Laura Hurt, and Terry McAllister. Without them, we wouldn't have been the success we were, the success we was, and also the mayor and Peggy Cram for their donation towards it. So it was very successful. Battles were good, and Alderman Deuster House actually won one. So thank you again.
You did great job, Jenny.
Thank you.
Alderman Gale, do you have any new business today? Alderwoman Mann?
No, sir.
Alderman Deuster House?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to thank Glenda for pulling my name out of the basket office.
She charges a commission. I don't know if you know that.
I expected that. For serious business, I have a request, I would refer to the proper authorities, a request by the Blessing Hospital Child Care Department to close College Street from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. on October, or College Street between 9th and 10th, from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. on October the 15th, so that the Adams County Health Department can conduct a, a car safety seat check.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered?
That's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Bauer?
No, sir.
Alderman Holbrook?
No, sir.
Alderman Havermael?
Yeah, I guess I do. No, I'm just kidding. I do have a couple things. It doesn't have anything to do with garbage either. So the first item will be, I'd like to refer to Traffic Commission to take a look at the T where Oak Street empties out into 48th Street from Walmart, Oak Street Mall, TNT, that area, about looking at if there's enough room there to do a right and left turn lane so we can move traffic that want to go right without having to wait. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered?
And then we have a, and I gave this to Marty earlier. I'll make it official. We have a sign that got knocked down by Stadium Drive out by Transitions. I'd like to have that put back up and, and placed in concrete, please. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered? Any additional?
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Yes, I just have one thing. Would just like to remind people, very interesting topic that'll be on the ballot this coming November is Quincy Public Schools' plan to have a bond referendum for new schools. The first public forum will be Wednesday at John Wood at 7 o'clock. This is very important for the future of Quincy. There's a lot of implications, whether or not you agree with it or you don't, but there's a lot of information to learn. I certainly encourage everyone to participate in these forums. If you're not sure what the plan is, there will be four forums between now and the election for you to learn about it, for you to educate, and certainly educate your neighbors. So would just encourage all citizens, elected officials, to go out and attend those forums. Alderman Farha?
No, Your Honor.
Alderman Sasson?
No, sir.
Alderman Ryan?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to refer to Streetlight Committee, the installation of a street light at the intersection of South 47th and Caleb.
47th and what?
South 47th and Caleb.
Okay.
Utilities Committee?
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lepers?
Yes, I just have one thing to send to the Garbage and Recycling Committee, a request to put together a better timeline and more of a plan, so all of us Aldermen and Women know how we're going to move forward on this garbage issue and have a little bit more information on what dates we're going to move forward and how things are going to progress.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered? Any additional business, Alderwoman? Alderman Mussolini?
No new business, Your Honor.
Alderman Brink?
No, thank you.
Alderwoman Heinecke?
Yes, Kentucky Street would like to have a block party on Saturday, September 20th, 5 to 9, between 11th and 12th. And they will need barricades between 11th and 12th in Kentucky, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered? Any additional business, Alderwoman?
I'm glad garbage is over.
Alderman Hostlog?
Yes, September 20th, I'd like a petition to close York Street, 9th to 10th. Barricades will be needed, 4:30 to midnight for a class reunion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? So ordered? Alderman Hostlog, any additional business?